Well, welcome. We'll call a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Crosslake to order on Monday, April 13th at 7:00 P.M. First thing on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think we've all received a sheet with the additions to the agenda.
You need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll...so move.
I'll second.
Motion, Wessels, second. He Cox. Any comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry.
We have a consent calendar. It's fairly comprehensive. I don't see...I personally don't see anything. All the items here will be considered to be routine by the City Council and will be acted on by only one motion. There will be no separate discussion on any of these items unless a citizen or a council member requests...are there any requests to pull any item off the consent calendar? If not, we'll accept a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Also move.
Motion, Wessels.
I'll second.
Second, He Cox. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Critical issues. We have an issue by Judy and Jason Connell that has to do with the Pine Lure Drive. And if I saw that Jason was here earlier, Jason, would you like to present your proposal, please?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I'll just read what I sent in to...you know, to get on the agenda. When I say "we," it mostly refers to Judy, as she is the owner of the property in question, Pine Lure Drive. We are requesting that the City of Crosslake take over ownership and maintenance requirements of Pine Lure Drive, which is currently a private road. Pine Lure Drive currently has over 25 tax-paying property owners who use this road to access their property. There are approximately 25 properties that also have a dwelling at this time on that We've been paying property taxes in Crosslake on the property for many years, and before that, her parents also paid property taxes and, of course, the costs associated with maintaining Pine Lure Drive. The road typically needs grading, maybe twice a year, snow plowing during the winter, and occasionally a tree may need to be removed in the summer during storm season. If an agreement can be made, we are willing to transfer ownership of Pine Lure Drive to the City of Crosslake for little or possibly no cost to the city other than administrative and legal costs necessary for the transfer of ownership. We are looking for your leadership and direction regarding this matter and expect to be in attendance here today, which we are. My mother is here as well. I've spoken with a couple of staff members regarding the issue, just to kind of find out where we were supposed to go. And the only thing I've been given is I do have information about...it's Article 4, Sections 42-91, basically the criteria for improvement and acceptance of a private road, which seems...which indicates that the city will not accept the private road without either pre...you know, pre-improvements or the process to improve the road, being approved through the steps mentioned in that article. Our request is that the city take ownership of the road, and we worry about the improvements after that. That's all I have.
One of the issues here, in fact, a major issue, is that under current regulation, the city does not accept roads unless they're up to city standards. However, those generally apply to new developments, new plots, new development within the city, in which case, and usually there aren't as many property owners involved, and sometimes if we get into a case like this where there's one or two property owners, they get involved, and it's...they're much easier to negotiate with and establish how we acquire this and how we improve the road. In this case, there are 25 riparian lots at least, and there are another half dozen non-reparian lots on the opposite side of the road. My position on this has been, and I've talked with Jason about it, is that if we refuse and they let the property go into tax forfeiture, the adjacent property owners may lose control of access to their properties. And so my question is, what happens if we just accept this as a minimum maintenance road or just a parcel of land and not maintain it? And then it's a nasty proposal, but then force the residents who are using the road to petition the city for improvements, maintenance, and what have you. But I invite comments to this. Mark?
My question is, if we break ranks, so to speak, from our ordinance on this road, how many others in the city are we looking at that might come to us next looking for the same treatment? That would be my question, and I don't know if that necessarily says yes or no. It's just I would like to know that before getting too far into that.
Can we put this on the overhead so people can get a view of what it kind of looks like? I agree with you, Mark, except I've been party to having the city take possession of a parcel that would have absolutely forbidden the property owners served by the road access. And we haven't had any...we don't...we didn't do anything with it. We don't maintain it. We don't do anything. We just own it. Now, I don't know if that's kosher or not. Brad?
Yeah. Yeah, ownership or title and whether we maintain it are...can be separated. They don't have to go hand in hand. So there are definitely some roads in town that, in fact, we've had some disputes over the years, so I'm not saying it's a good idea. But real recently, actually, over on Manhattan Point, some people have kind of complained to the city because it was a...so not too far from your place. It was a city road dedicated to the public, and they presumed that had to mean that we maintained the road, and we don't.
That's right.
And they were quite upset after they bought the house and now realize they need to pay for plowing, and it didn't seem like that big a deal, but it wasn't what they expected. And so it led to, you know, a bit of confusion. So a lot of other things we could do to talk about this issue. I don't know. It's probably a big issue. But one natural question, if you are going to maintain it, is before you take it over, you might want to have, you know, have an assessment agreement from people or some sort of understanding of some kind so that after you take it over, you know, the worry is no one's going to want to pay for the cost to improve it to a spot where Ted can properly maintain it.
What...how do we find out if all of these property owners that use the road have easements or access? Or doesn't that make any difference after this length of time of use?
Well, a lot of other roads like this, this happens all over the place. But, you know, on behalf of private citizens, it's not a city application. I do these all the time for clients, but you either get easements from everyone or you go to court and argue that it's been used for 15 years, and you ask for prescriptive easement rights, is what it's called. And that's when the court says, "We're going to give you an access," whether you get an easement from the landowner or not. But the people have to prove that they've been using it 15 years. And, of course, that costs money, and it can be disputed. I don't know the facts here of how long it's been there, who in fact has used it, and so on. But that's normally how it gets done. It's a private matter.
Interesting. Other comments?
What's Ted got to say about it? Look, here is comments.
Ted wants it all dressed up spit and polish, you know, before we take it over. And I don't think he wants to plow any more gravel or do any more grading of gravel roads, and I respect that.
I think we're going to find out right now.
I think we are. Ted?
Good evening. I don't have any problem plowing the gravel road. I can do that just as easily as I can a tarred road. Yeah, so there is a whole lot more maintenance to it. As you realize, we've sold our grader. We don't have that to grade and maintain that kind of road anymore. You could hire the...if you've got it graded or whatever, you could hire the grader, you know, that's once or twice a year that's got to be done with the road. We could add gravel to it. Makes it...makes my life easier if it was blacktopped. But, like we said, there's...this isn't just one. There's more of these in town.
Oh, yeah.
You're going to open up a whole bunch of these. You could call it a minimum maintenance road. You could do all kinds of different things. It's just what the council, the body, wants to do here.
Well, I think it's our responsibility to protect the citizens first and foremost, is where I'm coming from. And if we...but this...my alternative is, what as I see it, is it will go into tax forfeiture. And I don't think that's in the best interest of our community or our citizens. But that's just one person talking. David?
Have we had the city engineer look at this at all? Or any...I mean, any other input? Or is that part of the...
In order to minimize sending them through the ritual and incurring all kinds of expense, et cetera, it was my intention to get the basic consensus of the council as to whether we would consider it or not. And if we consider it, then there are all kinds of things we can do and that we should do to figure it out. But at this point, I haven't done anything else other than talk to them on the phone and ask them to come here. I think the...you know, it's an issue that goes to planning and zoning, and it goes to our utility commission, our street and road people. But it's also...you know, it's a funny thing. It's been approved back in whatever, 1930, '40, whenever this was put together. And it's been used like this all this time. And to shut it down, I don't think is right. And, you know, but we've got to recognize that these people have probably paid some amount of money over the years and initially with the purchase of their lots. But today, to bring that road up to standard would be a pretty stiff assignment. So I'm just wondering if we should consider it or if we...because I think it's a very...to me, when somebody offers to give you land, there's got to be something else involved. Of course, there's a liability here. But I think most of that liability belongs to the adjacent landowners. And, of course, I talked to a couple of them, and they're not interested in incurring any expense. You can be sure of that. So I don't know what the answer is. Brad, you haven't commented yet.
How's it been maintained? I mean, this is a big road. That serves a lot of property.
Yeah.
How's it been maintained up to this point?
Oh, we've just been the...you know, if something goes wrong, we call...
Step up the mic.
If something goes wrong, we call the people and have it taken care of. The typical things we've got to deal with are grading the road, of course, plowing the road all winter long, cutting, you know, taking some trees off the road. There is one culvert on the road, which we've had to repair recently. So everything that we just hire out, mostly wannabe and J.T. Construction, has taken care of those tasks.
Who pays the bill?
My mom pays the bill.
And other property owners have been fair and contributing their fair share and splitting it equally? I mean, that's probably a dumb question, but...
Right.
I mean, like I say, there's just...there's a lot of properties on this road.
Correct. And that's a lot...one question everybody that doesn't live on the road brings up. And my mom has not asked for money to, you know, to help with the offset the expenses up until this point, and that's just the way it's been. My grandpa never asked for money, so my mom doesn't ask for money. There's been some times in the past where a collection may have been, you know, picked up from various people by one of the residents who's passed away since, and...but nothing like that happens to this today.
I have a question, Mr. Rowe, if I can.
Sure.
Jason, your family, your mother lives on that road, too?
Correct. Yep.
And so you own some of the land across the road from the lake?
We do not own any land on the other side.
Oh, yours on the lake?
All of ours is on...currently on the lake. We did have a piece on the other side, but we sold that.
So you live on that road, too? Okay.
Correct. Yeah. We live towards the end of the road.
Okay.
What's the real estate tax that you people pay on this today?
Well, ours is, I guess, two lots, and it's...
No, no, the road.
Oh, the road itself, the taxes. I don't have them exactly, but it's...I think it's $10, $15 a year. I mean, it's next to nothing.
Interesting. So in other words, if we took it under our wing, then we wouldn't be losing a lot of tax revenue. What's the council's suggestion that we do with this request?
Mr. Rowe, I have another question that prompted from that. If you get a separate tax statement for that road?
Yeah, the road is completely, you know, whatever, legally described.
It's a right-of-way plat.
There's two specific properties. Well, one is just...you can't really see it on the map, but there's a little triangle on there that has its own description. But otherwise, the whole thing has its own legal description.
It's just the road, not connected to your property that you live on and that sort of thing?
Correct. And we haven't had a survey done on that in a long time, but...
Have you got a copy of the most recent survey that you did do?
No. Not that does the road specifically. No.
That's kind of unusual, that that road would...
No, that's...you know, that would assist in making it a much easier process, I think, in transferring the ownership.
I think that's...rather than being a meandering trail that runs across properties with and without easements, this is what the county told me is what they call a right-of-way plat. It's just a road that's got a description to it.
So you're at the end of this road, and you pay to plow and maintain this thing all the way back to get to your property while all these others are enjoying that?
Correct.
It's a good deal for us, right?
It is awesome.
Yeah.
Over the years, I've talked to a few different owners in there who say or claim, at least, that they contribute toward that, but that's not the case. Or maybe they quit when they changed hands or something. I suppose there's...
Nobody is formally...
No, formally. So nobody...well, I suppose some few people might help out with it. Here's a check once in a while, but there's no formal agreement where they have to.
There's no formal agreement, and any checks, you know, have been very few and far between.
Okay.
But we're not requesting them from anybody. We're not saying that...we're not in any way insinuating that we're expecting them to chip in. At this point, it's been our decision to pay...to make those payments.
I love your family. I've never even met you.
I got a road at my house I'd see in the city and sell you.
And now you know why I encourage you to come before the council.
So this written partition on Section 4290 of 35% or more of the benefiting property owners, how does that work in a situation like this?
Well, that was part of why I was not understanding those being attached to a requirement being that, you know, the ownership and the requirement of the road improvement at the same time and having to get, you know, approval from all of those people. Now, I know not everybody on the road is going to...would be excited about a road improvement. Some people have more foot frontage or whatever you call it than others. You know, some of them have just a small amount right on the road, and others have kind of a lot like ours that kind of wraps around a whole corner. So, you know, ultimately, I don't know that...I mean, the roads work fine. Everybody's gotten up and down it no problem. There has never been an incident on that road. So maintaining it the way it is is completely feasible, but I understand what the statute
Mr. Mayor, can I just maybe...
Please.
So I guess the first thing is we're like in uncharted territory here?
Not really. Our rule has always been that if you want to dedicate a road to the city, you bring it up to city specs, and then you can turn it over to the city. But it's usually part of a planning process. But that's the way it is.
Hence, I said...
But it's not uncharted.
But, yeah, we are...this hasn't followed that path.
For the most cases, we have. There's one I can think of near River Bluffs where we picked up...how many feet was that wide? 30 feet? Something like that?
I don't know if that's...
And it doesn't serve them all, but it goes partway into this development and stops. And that has caused us, as far as I know it, little or no problems.
30 feet?
But we don't touch it.
30 feet?
A width.
Width for how long?
Oh, I don't know. It's 3, 4, 500 feet, something like that. It goes right across a county road, what, 36, and right into the river.
Mr. Rowe, I have another question. I have another question, if I may. The tax forfeiture status, if they quit paying for that...I've sold property along there over the years, and they had title work done and had easements to use the road. If that went into tax forfeiture status, meaning the county now owns it, what happens to that easement? Is it still valid? I would think.
Yeah, well, that's the...I...a lot of little...they're not city problems yet. They're just title...private title problems right now. But I doubt that road is fully within the described area. Usually, they're not. So that's one concern. It's not ours now, but if it becomes a city road, as meandering as that is, I bet you parts of it are outside of the described road. I assume some people have recorded easements, but probably not everyone. Who knows? But if they have an easement, then the ownership of the road really doesn't matter. If you have an easement, you have an easement, as long as it was properly done, you know, back in the day. But I haven't done title work in any of this, so I don't know the status. But the last question is, it's not really owns it, it's how you maintain it. And their family's taken the burden for years, but that can't last forever. And a lot of these lots are going to want to get bank financing, and a lot of bigger non-local banks now require maintenance agreements before they'll give you a loan, as you would know in your business. And that's what I hear...that's what I...you know, that's not a city problem yet again. But without a maintenance agreement, there's going to be people out there that won't not get financing for their properties out there. Because some bank is not going to trust that, you know, a family's going to do it for free. And that's kind of a mess when you've got that many property owners trying to share maintenance costs. And good luck getting a maintenance agreement signed by 25 people.
Well, are we willing to consider this if we can find a way to...how do I say it? Acquire it as a minimum maintenance road? And subsequent to that, I would follow the rules that are here. You've got to get petitioned by 100% of the owners, but part of that would be that they would also be willing to assume a portion of the cost of bringing it up standard or maintaining it. But I think if we had a provision in our ordinance for a minimum maintenance road and we continued to hire an independent contractor to grade it once in a while and we would plow it, I don't know. But I think part of our role as city council is to be on the protective mode of our city residents and property owners.
I have a comment.
Cool.
There's a lot of real estate there, and they're obviously paying taxes, right?
Yep.
I mean, we're not just talking about a couple lots here. I mean, I'm very familiar with the road. I've been going up and down that. I had no idea that was not a city road. Fooled me, you know? So I'm kind of new to how this game's working. So now I know that it's not a city road, and I understand how it's been going along, which that totally surprises me that that can happen these days. But, you know, you've got a lot of real estate on there. You've got a lot of tax, you know, income, city tax income. There's a lot of lots there, a lot of valuable lots. That's, you know, that's Whitefish Chain Real Estate. But if they had to improve it, and if you assessed it, I don't even know if this is, you know, feasible. I'm just throwing that out. I mean, good Lord, I mean, it wouldn't take much per lot there to fix up that road, and, you know, everybody throws in a couple of grand. I mean, you got to...you know, I mean, it doesn't look like it would take much to me to do that road, and you split it up between all those people. There's a lot of good real estate there, and now you've got a real road, and now the city is maintaining it. And to me, that's a no-brainer. I mean, if I had a lot on that road, I'd be game on. Let's do this. I'm not expecting the city to pay for this, you know? You know, but I'm just saying that we have a lot of other roads that have a lot of real estate on them. You're getting taxes from that. Those are all viable lots. They're all developed lots. You know, that's a big road. That's not just a little road, you know? I don't know why...well, I guess I know why. If somebody had been doing it for me for free all these years, I would...I'd probably like to keep it that way, too. But that's not the real world. So that's my comment, is I'm just looking at this. I had no idea of all the years I've been going up and down there that that was not a city road, and the city didn't plow it, and, you know...doesn't mean we have to pave it, you know? Not every road in the world has to be paved.
Would we, as a council, be willing to accept this as a minimum maintenance road and deal with the improvements at some later time, as we have called it in the earlier times, kick the can down the road?
I think you need more information as to the rest of the residents and so on, because this is a big can of worms.
Yeah, I agree with that. That was just...excuse me, Gary. I mean, that was just a comment that I had from looking at this plat. I totally agree with you, sir, on the more information and feedback from the residents on that road and everything else. I wasn't trying to push for anything here tonight.
This, to me, has to be done with some type of an assessment.
Yes, sir. I would totally agree with that.
And I don't know how you can accept something until you know where you're going.
Can we...do we...can we have a public hearing on this and talk about it with the people that live on the road? Because to me, that's...that goes with what you're saying and what you're saying, more information. We...you know, there's a lot of detailed information, but if the landowners aren't interested...
Yeah.
We're...
Why should we be? Right.
Huh?
Right. I agree. Yeah.
I like this whole idea, as long as it doesn't cost the city one nickel.
Right.
Oh, I think we afford a nickel.
Figure that out, then, you know, I'm starting to love it.
We just don't know.
Oh, give us a buck.
Well...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we don't know...I mean, I think the question you're asking is good, but we just...we don't know what...if we say yes, we're interested, then are we committing to surveys and $30,000 to get from A to B to have a better decision? Or...we don't know. I don't know. I think talking to the landowners is a good step. I don't sense there's a rush, like we have to do this.
No, there is no time constraint.
Right.
This is the beginning of the process.
Yep.
And I feel for you having to drive, have to maintain it, but, man, everybody's got a share in that cost.
Oh, yeah.
No, and there's entirely the possibility of getting...you know, if we really asked everybody on the road, they would chip in. I don't feel any reason why, you know, at least the majority of the people would be...would have no problems chipping in their portion of the maintenance, because it's not that much. Our biggest concern is we no longer want to own the road. You know, we may not live there forever. If we sold that property, then we owned the road. If we sold that property, then we owned the road. That would make no sense.
That's an interesting point. Brad, can we have a, could we invite the adjacent property owners to a public hearing?
Well, yeah, that was my comment is, I wouldn't say why you wouldn't before you make a decision, but if you're going to have a public meeting, it'd be good to have a bit of data, because they're going to immediately ask, what's this all cost? So I would, I would try to get from WSN what it would cost to do a feasibility study to just see what the cost is to improve it, maybe a couple different options of ways to improve it. But that's going to cost money to get that number, number one. And then number two, if the group decides, yes, let's do that part, find out what it really would cost to do the road and what the assessments would be, because it's hard to have a public hearing without any information as to, you know, what this is going to cost. Doesn't mean you're going to commit to paving it, but if you don't know what it's going to cost to pave it or what the assessment per lot would be, it's hard to have a good meeting.
And you may only get ten percent of the front footage of the residents to show up. So does that give you enough indication of the acceptance of the project?
Probably not. You know, I think that, first of all, one, I think we should, can we retain our city engineer to give us an idea of what this is going to cost to maintain it, one? And can we go ahead on a minimum maintenance road? Because, you know, that's two pieces. If we want them to accept the road and we're going to spend, how long is that thing?
It's about a mile.
That's not a cheap project. And of course, there's twenty, twenty-six plus another six, there's thirty property owners along there. I'm just, should we retain the city engineer to give us an idea of what that's going to cost to at least, I guess, in multiple phases? What it's going to cost us to maintain it? What's it going to cost us to improve it? What improvements are really required before we dare accept ownership of it? What is the liability? Mr. Wessels, you're drawing a deep breath.
I'm, I agree with others here. We don't have near enough information to make a decision today. However, I hate to spend twenty, thirty thousand dollars to find out what the road could cost us before we even decide we want it. And I, and I understand that, well, when I was doing a project, Ox Lake Landings, years ago, I just went to a blacktop company, Anderson Brothers. What would it take to blacktop? Is he came out, drove the road, came back, gave me a ballpark off-the-cuff number, which was good enough for the residents in Ox Lake Landing to decide, do we want to spend plus or minus in that range to get this road improved? And I would think that we could do something similar, you know, spend ten bucks instead of spending ten thousand, just to get a ballpark number that could be inaccurate, but in the ballpark at least, of what we're talking about for money before we get very far into this thing. And then I'm sort of curious, I had heard, and again, rumors are wonderful things, half are true and it's always fun guessing which half. The, I'd heard that there's been numerous attempts to petition along this road to take it over, but you would know and is that true or not true?
That's not true.
Not true? Okay. Well, we found that out fast. So, that...
But there have been some attempts to get the city to take this road over. Is that not true, Jason?
Oh, just not to the point where they got to the city council.
No, but...
We've spoken to the staff and stopped when essentially came to the conclusion we'd have to pay to upgrade the road before they would take it. But when I read this, it doesn't actually say that the road has to be improved before you'll take it. It just says that's part of the process.
Well, at this point, we generally have not accepted roads in plants that are not brought up to a standard, road standard of base and paving and shouldering.
Right. And this would, you know, beginning in the process, would start that feasibility study, see if it's even a feasible project. If it was a feasible project, then it would move on to, you know, the assessment process, I guess. And if it wasn't feasible, then it says in the ordinance that the city would just incur that cost. But I understand we don't need the city to incur a large cost to figure out if it's feasible. We could probably have somebody, an expert, kind of...
Ballpark it for us.
Ballpark it, eyeball it, yeah. At least to get the process started to see if, well, I, you know, the residents would even be interested in an assessment of that sort. I mean, I guess I couldn't say one way or the other, speak for anybody else.
Mr. Mayor, aren't we talking about just a minimum maintenance road? We're, I mean, the use of improvements is kind of getting us into the tenth chapter of the book here, and I think it's more like the old grade.
Oh, I hope not.
We don't want to take over the old grade.
No, I'm just saying that that's a minimum maintenance road.
Well, that's less than...
I mean, you're going to have somebody go through it, take a look at it and say, okay, we need to grade it once and it's good to go, you know?
Well, you know, we've got several alternatives here and I know we don't like to spend money.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I could make a phone call to either one of the paving companies we've used in the past.
Right.
They would come up here and I'd ask them two scenarios. If we gravelled it, put new gravel on it, fixed it up so there was a decent travelable road, called it a minimum maintenance price, and I could ask them what it would cost to pave it. And I could have those two costs to you, very short order, I think.
That sounds like a reasonable solution.
Thanks, Ted.
Thank you, Ted.
And one more scenario, if you would, Ted, to bring it up to city specs. What would it take to do that? Because there's snow storage issues out there. You know, it's one of those old-fashioned roads that were built with a road grate or with a bulldozer and so oftentimes, the road is lower than the surrounding land, which means the water drains into the road instead of off of the road. And then you have snow storage issues too, so...
That's kind of what I would talk about, if we were going to gravel it. I'd want it brought up so there's positive drainage off of it. That's one thing I would discuss with them.
Okay. Okay. And then because the Cross Lake Communications is talking about putting fiber down this road, it's something we need to be talking about anyway. If we're going to put, spend the money to put fiber down that road, we should figure out what we want to do with it. That said, we got hit last August with 1.7 million dollars in capital expenditure requests and so we have to be careful how we do this. And I don't want to spend a lot of money upfront, but I don't want to take, I would be against taking on the road as a minimum maintenance, because then I, now we're, the liability now is not ours. If the liability also becomes ours from a minimum maintenance, I would want some information from the attorney on what kind of a sticky wicket we're getting ourselves into.
What happens if the Connells say, no, you can't dig, you can't dig a line into our private property?
It's another part of it. So, well, I talked to Kevin before about utility easements. They've already got a telephone line down there, so they've got easements for that in place.
Well, we've put stuff in where we shouldn't have before. Mr. Pearson, can we put a telephone, can we put a communications conduit down through this property?
Well, I have no idea what easements we have out there. So, yeah, you're right. Just because there's a line there doesn't mean we have easements, but I have not looked at it at all.
That's a good point, Mark, and I, you reminded me of that earlier.
I'm a big believer in good roads in Cross Lake. You have people that buy expensive real estate and they drive nice cars and to me, they have a right to have a good road. And for this family to be stuck with this for all this time has been alarming to me, but I've been here thirty years and I keep scratching my head, why doesn't somebody do something? And I learned a bunch tonight. A, there's been no petitions. I thought there had been. And so, they're paying for it versus I had other people tell me they're chipping in once in a while. So I learned quite a bit tonight and then I think in the next month, if we're talking to Mr. Pearson and the engineer and Ted, we can find, we can learn a lot in the next month and discuss this again, if that would be okay.
Would you be willing to monitor that project with Ted and the engineers and the resources you need to determine where we're going?
My plate's been rather full lately, but I can probably, unless...
I can do it.
Dave, if you would, and then I can contact you and find out where things are going and what you're learning. And I might talk to Brad and Ted and those guys too. I think it's something we, I think it was important that you brought it up and I'm glad you did. And I learned a bunch tonight. We need to have some more information. Before, I would vote one way or, I'd vote no if I voted anything tonight.
You what?
I would vote no if I voted anything tonight.
I don't think we're looking for a decision.
But I might vote yes if I learn more and...
If you know what it's about, what our liabilities are.
Right, and I learned a lot tonight. Changed my mind on several issues tonight, already based on his commentary.
So, do we need a motion or was consensus good enough?
Consensus.
I don't think you need a motion, to be honest with you. I don't think you need a motion to do this. Staff has, staff has been directed to provide some information. We'll go ahead and do that. If, Dave, you could get ahold of me, I'd like the staff to get together, including Mark or Dave from WSN, just to give us some ideas and keep Brad in the loop as well, so...
So is it the consensus of the council that Dave Schrupp will follow up with the engineer and Mark Wessels and Ted Strand on an approach to find out what this might cost to get it approved and get it transferred to the city of Cross Lake? And according to Jason, we have some time, so this is not a rush rush. And we really need to be addressing it during the summer season, however, when the residents of those properties are here.
I'm sure you'd have more luck, yeah.
Yep.
And I'm willing to do whatever is necessary to help with what you're going to work on, Dave.
Will you make sure you stay in contact with Jason?
Yeah, how do I reach you, Jason? What's your, you have a cell?
Is that, is that okay?
Yep, you can just call our house phone. It's 2585.
What?
It's on the email.
Good, okay.
Oh, there it is, all right.
Super. Well, we'll approach it and see where we come.
Excellent.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Public forum. Anybody want to get up here and risk their life? No action will be taken on any of the issues raised, but it helps the council become aware of what you people deem as issues. If appropriate, the issues will be placed on the agenda of a future council meeting and the speaker must state their identity, name and address. And you will be given probably as much time as you need, but we prefer that you use three minutes, but you can ask for more. Anybody want to talk? Wow. All right. Seeing no requests, the public forum is, we have another one at the end of the meeting. The mayor's report. We have a service award to give tonight. Is Mr. Henke here? Why, he is. I see him. John Henke, would you please come forward? John's been a service to the city of Cross Lake for fifteen years. He's a very interesting guy to work with. He's got many ideas. You can't keep up with him. I go and talk to him and he just drowns me in ideas and things that he wants to do. And I want to say to you...
Careful, don't forget your hand hook here.
Whoa, I almost took off my...
I'll come to you, Steve.
John, in honor of your service to Cross Lake for the last fifteen years, and in honor and with deep appreciation of the faithful devoted and the valuable service you have rendered to the city of Cross Lake, we present you with a fifteen-year plaque.
Thank you.
We give you more, but we can only give you a plaque.
Appreciate it.
John, my wife and I just hiked those trails finally a couple of weeks ago. Now we've been over there like three times. They're awesome. Hadn't been back there yet, but we took our dogs back there through the hills and we made a wrong turn and we ended up in the Ox Lake Hills and then we ended up coming up the road and then, but we had a great time. It was beautiful back there. We're starting to figure out the map now.
We have a map.
Yep. And it's a very nice chunk of real estate back there.
All right. It is a great job. I, for any of you who have not visited the community center in recent times, and what day of the week do you give rides around on the trail?
Wednesdays in the summer.
Wednesdays in the summer. For those of us who don't want to walk that far, he's got a big golf cart. He'll give you a ride. The next topic meets a little controversy, but I think the proposal in front of us is well-meaning and probably should be adopted. We want to change the guidelines for the advisory board, commission and committee positions and the economic development authority appointments and procedures policy. We, I have a person that we had apply, I think, last December. We'll approve his appointment to the communications commission, hopefully tonight. And it's taken with this procedure, it's taken us that long to get approval. It's a very cumbersome process. We'd ask that the city council consider adopting a revised version of this. It's pretty much the same, but it takes the personnel committee out of the process, which can be difficult to schedule, and it also takes out, where is that? Yes. It also takes out a criminal history investigation report. I think we're a small enough community yet that we can probably figure out whether most of our candidates are of good character. And even then, sometimes, even if we know, they deserve a second chance. But it takes us forever to get all this stuff coordinated and all of it put together. And so what we'd really like to do, I don't know, have you got the copy over there, Brad? On page one is the biggest piece of this puzzle that we would like to drop from the procedure. And also paragraph B1, which is an interview by the personnel committee. I think that we're having a difficult enough time getting volunteers. We need volunteers to help support this community, as you all know, and to subject them to a criminal investigation is a little ambitious, I think. So we're asking that we approve a guideline which takes that part of it out and takes the personnel committee out of the process. That basic premise goes along with all of us who are trying to gain and get volunteers to serve on all of the commissions and all of the committees. So with that, is there anybody here on the council that thinks we should not do this or that we should do it or that we should leave it alone? Comments?
Question, where was this originated from? Did we talk about it here before or did I miss that?
Shar, help me with this one.
We've done it since I was here. This was done on December thirteenth. I remember working on it and I'm sure I took the form off of some other communities.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me rephrase. I wasn't questioning where this form originated from. I remember doing that. Were the revision to it, where did that start? Where did the push for that start?
I think that started from several of the commission chairs and I can tell you that it also, the clerk had her fingers in it and gave me a lot of berries about it and told me that I was party to putting this together like this as well. And after reading it and seeing the product, I had to agree with her. So that's where it came from. Basically, it came from an administrative push. Fair enough? Shar, you're awful quiet. What?
The recent changes, yes.
Okay.
Question, the next question would be on removing all that criminal history stuff. I agree, we probably don't need that stuff, but I'd like to hear from our attorney if we're getting ourselves a first step into a big pile of do by removing that.
Well, unfortunately, I'm not sure I know enough about each commission, but the things that come to my head are, do they work with young children? I don't think so. Do they handle... Do they handle or control finances directly? I don't think so. I'm trying to think of any of the red flags where that criminal check, I think, is necessary. But if it's more, from what I know, the commission's job duties, but I don't know them all, I think it'd be okay. You know, clearly, for like, there's different roles within the city that you would need this, obviously, but, you know, a board commission, probably not required.
Then I would ask one more question, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
And that's in 3A3, Roman numeral three, A and then three, that whole paragraph coming out regarding criminal history. What would it do to us if we left in the one sentence that says, "Any applicant that has previously been convicted of a felony will not be eligible for appointment"? Now, of course, if we're not doing a background check, we don't really know that. We're expecting that felon to be honest today and say that I don't, I've disallowed myself from being on that. I don't know that that would necessarily be a bad sentence to leave in there, even if we're not doing the background check.
You know, it's restating some pieces of state and federal law. Previous convictions are not justification for not running for office, as long as our sentence has been completely served. We stumbled on this a few years ago, only because it was a sentence piece, but even so, you know, it's easy enough for any reason for, and since the commissions themselves are searching out people and bringing them to the council for approval, I would assume that they've got enough character judgment in them to understand that they're appointing somebody that they can work with, and that's reasonable.
I would tend to agree with you.
Tend to, though.
In Crosslake, we, I don't think we probably have a lot of convicted felons and probably very few of them that would be interested in being on an advisory commission, if there are some. So I don't know that it's really a problem. I, that's not something I'm gonna stomp up and down and say, "I think we should leave that in there." I'm just asking the question, just kinda, you know, maybe you don't wanna apply for this if you've had this background. Oh, here comes a guy who will have some input.
Oh.
As far as the crim history goes, generally, it just takes a few days for us. It's just a matter of filling out a form, they sign the teness and warning, and then Sergeant Lee does the criminal history check, goes to the VCA, and it's generally, they're back within a few days, so if that's, makes any difference for you.
All I can tell you is what happened here. The candidate that applied in December is up for approval tonight. Now, I don't know all the pieces that went into that.
Was that...
Disappear information, that's all.
Appreciate that.
Was that because of this paragraph three?
I don't know, but it's that application that fostered the revision for this, that prompted the revision to this guideline.
Did we, as applicants to run for city council and mayor, go through this?
Mm-mm.
Then, what?
Hello? You're right on, Mark. I agree with you. No, we didn't.
Never convicted?
No, well...
Can't prove that.
I can tell you, if you're not done serving your sentence, you and I couldn't have run.
Mr. Mayor, I have just a comment. I think if, what's wrong with inserting something that, if you're able to vote, that you can apply for this job? 'Cause that talks about a felony. It says you have to be a citizen, you gotta be a resident for twenty days, that doesn't really apply. You have to be at least eighteen years old, not convicted of treason or felony, or have had your civil rights restored. You can't be under guardianship of a person or found legally incompetent. I mean, if you inserted that in there, those are things that we wouldn't want to have happen. And then I was wondering, the other thing, are all of the volunteers property owners or residents of the city?
No. Definitely not.
Okay. Some boards, it's not required. I know for Park and Rec, for instance, it's not required that they be a resident. I agree with you, Shar. I think that's the only one, but I'm not sure the telephone commission. Park and Rec is the only board that I'm aware of that's not required to be a resident.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's only Park and Rec.
It's only Park and Rec, okay.
But that's just because it happens to be that way, right? I mean, that's not by design. You can be a...
I don't know when that was determined to perform.
Yeah, right.
It just seems to me that you're asking about being on a committee or a commission, and you're holding them to a standard that is higher than the people that are sitting at this table. I don't even know how that got there to begin with. That seems awfully silly to me. So I have no problem with removing that personally.
Well, considering Dave's comment, we're all eligible to vote, I think. And I, the other piece of it is not, I wouldn't limit it to, in here, I wouldn't limit it to Crosslake residents, so we can use it generally, but if, you know...
I think other commissions are required to by our ordinance in other places. It's just that the Park and Rec one is not.
Well, this is, this covers them all.
Don't you give this to them?
You might, you might wanna look at property owners rather than residents.
Yeah, that's...
Oh, you've been on, where'd this, oh...
Internet, you get all sorts of stuff on the internet.
It does say property owners.
Does it?
Does it?
Oh, good.
Yep, for all the other ones.
Yep, so that's...
Somebody wrote property owner in. Is that your writing?
Oh, that's me.
Well, that's you. Here, I'll scratch that, and I'll pass it on.
This document says...
The requirement at the time was like to be a property owner, not a resident.
A property owner, I guess.
And that's in this document now? What, do you know?
It's not in the document you have, it's on the application itself.
On the application has that?
For information.
Be a property owner.
Alright.
Is that okay to have that there because of renter in town? Of course, we, I don't know, maybe we don't want renters, I don't know.
What if you lease your property for the last forty years?
Exactly. That's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering if property owners should be on there, although I kinda like the idea they have a vested interest, but...
Well, if they're gonna volunteer, I think you got a vested interest. You just have to worry about what their interest really is.
Was the question not that you want to remove Roman numeral three, item three, from the document E2 that we've got? Isn't that what we're talking about? I mean, that's a separate deal. Didn't you just wanna clean this up, isn't that?
And then there's...
And then there's the one line appointment process.
Yep.
Interview by the personnel committee, blah, 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 blah. That says nothing about real estate, owning, whatever, what...
Yeah.
It just, it just makes it simple, simple is good, isn't it? Less that's in here is good.
Like Mr. Pence always said, it's a work in progress. And I like that idea, so I think we should accept it as revised here, as proposed, and if we don't like it, we can come back and visit it again.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I should've asked that question a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Brad. Oh, yes. The process for submitting a complaint. I have a comment form here. I don't know where it is right now. But anyway, the sum and substance of it is, if you really wanna complain and you wanna file it here in the city of Crosslake, you should identify yourself and what the issue is, and date it, and give us your name and address, so that we can contact you and follow up. Planning and zoning, I know, has a form. I've got it here somewhere. And I think it's an excellent process. Since I've been in office, I've received two anonymous complaints. What am I supposed to do with them? One of them is a complaint about a retailer in town. Which one? Who's complaining? Why? I can't do anything with it, and I apologize to the person that filed the complaint, but we cannot respond to anonymous complaints. And so if you want to file a complaint, you can talk to John, you can, here in planning and zoning, you can talk to Shar, and fill out a form, or give us it on a letterhead that identifies who you are, what the complaint is, in some detail, and we will certainly get back to you. But anonymous complaints are not something that we invite or can react to. Is the council alright with that?
I'd like to add something to it, if I can.
Sure.
I agree with you so far, but I'd like to add something to it. My understanding is, if I make a written complaint about what you're doing on your property, my identity is protected by data practices laws, correct? If I'm complaining about a policy or procedure that the city uses, my identity is not protected.
Okay.
So if I don't like a particular ordinance, or I don't like Shar, I think Dan's a jerk, I, my identity is not, by the way, Dan, I don't think that. So my identity is not, is not protected in those situations. That's a public complaint, and versus if I'm complaining about what you're doing on your property, you put, you put a deck on, and I don't think you got a permit for it. My identity's protected for that. You've added, added on a room addition, and I don't think you got a permit for it, or you cut down a tree, or whatever it might've been. Those types of complaints, your identity's protected. So I think it's important that people understand that distinction. And that comes back to if you're having a kegger party at your place, and I wanna complain about it, my identity's protected. Usually, the person having the kegger party knows it's one of the neighbors, but it's, your identity's protected.
Well, I will say to you that anonymous complaints that are personal in nature, we're gonna have a difficult time dealing with. We can protect our identity 'cause we don't know it, so that's fine with me. We won't do anything with them. And all I'm saying, Mark, is that those complaints that deal with issues within our city that they want addressed, they should be willing to identify themselves. That's all.
I agree.
Amen.
Alright. So, so council, can we get the consensus that that's basically okay, and that if there are real legal issues involved with some of these, and their identity should be protected, we will certainly do that? Is the council alright with that, or you wanna...
I'm fine.
Perfect.
That's fine.
Alright, consensus obtained. Couple of other things. Okay, we have also in front of us a applicant for the communications commission, who is the one I've been referring to all along. David Fisher has applied and passed all the rigorous requirements to be approved as a communications company advisory board member. I'll make a motion that we approve, Dave, as a member of the commission.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Couple of other things have taken place. One, we had an open, a town hall meeting here recently, which was relatively well-attended. It proved to me that one of the things that, the things that we all want for this community are all the same. We all want this to be a great community, we wanna get along, we want decent housing, we want young people, we want schools, and I was just really impressed that this community, when it really comes down to the real issues, will get along. We gotta recognize that tourism is still a mainstay in our economy here. We need more public lake access, we need to encourage people. We, the schools were also mentioned, and if we're going to encourage young families to live here, we need to provide jobs, schools, and the essential services, healthcare, banking, et cetera. And that basically happened at both the Chautauqua meeting and the town hall meeting. By the way, I never saw more people than we had at the St. Patrick's Day parade. The streets were full, and I think we should congratulate all of those who worked on it under the leadership of Cindy Mughatol, and I wanna thank you, Cindy. It was a great party. We need to encourage businesses. One of the things that we're gonna see tonight is a commercial land use ordinance revision that is easier to read. I think it's a step in the right direction. Deb Dorfler stood up and said we need more jobs. We have watched the communications company in the last year place fiber to the school who is now offering high school online classes. They ran out of juice. We installed fiber in there, thanks to Kevin, Deb, and company. Crowing Power up on County Road One needed more internet communication capacity, again, without a whole lot of fuss. Fiber was installed to their remote facility up there. For those of you who haven't seen it, there's a big crowing power facility up there to serve us better. So it is great. And basically, the same thing happened at the Chautauqua meeting. We talked about Crosslake and where it is and what it's gonna be, and I was just impressed, and I wanna thank everybody for helping us do that. But I, I was surprised, because I discovered that all of us really want the same thing for Crosslake. We may differ on how we're gonna get there, but we do want the same thing. And we're working on the EDA portion of this, which should and could influence the way that Crosslake grows, and we hope that can happen. It's in keeping with the movers and shakers and their desires. Thank you. I think that concludes the mayor's pontification. Mr. Dan, your turn.
Under item one on the organizational chart, during the, our review process for department heads, it's pointed out that perhaps our organizational chart wasn't as up to date as it should be. Mike, if you could, for the public, you all have it in front of you as well, but we have actually three versions. The third version came out with the agenda tonight, based on some comments from the communications company. This is how the organizational chart was originally set up, and it shows the city administrator off to the side, down from the mayor and council. In a normal situation, that city administrator person should be directly below the council, and then all the department heads below that. In this particular instance, it makes, gives the appearance that department heads report directly to the mayor and council, and that's not the way it should be. The next slide would be the proposal from April thirteenth. We did make a number of adjustments, and you probably see that on the first one as well. It does not include P and Z. Planning and zoning is not included, because we don't have that department anymore, is under, necessarily under the city. It's a county function and being done by a consultant, obviously, and obviously, I'm a consultant as well, so... But we did make the adjustment where the city administrator is shown directly below the city council, and all department heads then will report to the city administrator. We also had, showing on the right side of that, the communications company reporting through the administrator to the council. And on the third slide, we get a proposal from the communications company, showing the Crosslake Communication General Manager, being performed by CTC now, reporting directly to the council, rather than through the city administrator. So you've got three different options here, either two or three, whatever you're comfortable with. Either running the communications company up through you or through the city administrator, I think, is up to you. You know, one of the other things that comes to mind, and has been discussed, at least briefly, is kind of the reporting and how reporting goes when you've got so many consultants doing, you know, a lot of this work. We have a CTC consultant, we have myself as city administrator, you've got a P and Z, a number... Z, a number of consultants, and how that reporting, you know, how it works from a reporting standpoint. Now, the department heads, I will say, do report through me. If there's personnel issues, if there's other issues that, that they need help with, you know, I'm getting phone calls, I'm getting text messages, I'm getting emails, I'm getting all those things from all the department heads. Doesn't happen an awful lot. They, they do a good job without needing a lot of interaction with me, but they do, you know, interact with me quite frequently. I know Schar and Mike, it's, it's almost daily. The others, it's a little less frequent than that, but, so, you know, from that standpoint, I think the work, the working relationship works just fine. You know, P and Z, we don't show on here. We did also eliminate a few other of the positions that are no longer included. I think that was in the communications company, possibly, where we don't have all of the positions that we used to have. So these are the, a couple of the proposals. Frankly, either two or three work, work for me. You've got the, the second proposal, the one that says April 13th, and then you got the other one that revised April 13th.
Just, I think P and Z has to be on here. I just don't know how you can have a, an entity in our facility without some sort of reporting relationship.
They don't have to be live one either.
Somebody has to be. I mean, we, as a council, we can't, I can't run in and tell them what to do. I'm sorry, but it might have to fall back to you again.
That's fine. That's the way I've been working for, you know, almost 40 years.
I was wondering where, if there was one complaint I did get, it had to do with planning and zoning not being a Cross Lake function anymore. And I think that's a mistake. They're enforcing Cross Lake ordinances. They're, while this represents who dictates their paycheck, it doesn't represent how the process works. And so I really think that P and Z should be a department represented there, and I understand that the county, we're, what do I want to say? Taking advantage of county expertise, there's no question about that. And there's, I'm not complaining that it's working or not, I'm just saying that I think that I agree with David.
Easy to add him back in, so that's no problem. Easily done.
I think the rest, my opinion is the rest looks fine.
What about the rest of the council here? Where are you guys on that?
I agree with Dave. You have to have planning and zoning on there. After all, they do represent us. And I think they should be on there, that's the only.
Okay. Mark?
I, I would agree that next to Cross Lake Communications would be the place to put them, or next to the other way, because it works, the hierarchy, it would, no, I'm sorry, it would go underneath the city administrator part, so make them next to the fire chief, maybe on that end, wherever you're going to put it, the box for it. But I do think, yeah, it should go through Dan vote first, city administrator, and, and the council, we get our direction from Dan, or we get our information from Dan. I think it, we, we need to keep reminding ourselves of a few basic things, and that's that this council is required to operate as a unit. None of us individually has the right to go over and talk to Schar and director, or talk to employee at Public Works and direct them, and those types of things. We don't have that right. That comes up through the department head, and then through Dan, city administrator, if Dan's not here one day. So we have to keep in mind that, that we have to operate together as a unit. And for instance, how getting, planning and zoning here with that contract basis, now we have three of them, with CTC, with Dan, and, and planning and zoning, all three of those are contract employees. I know how you feel about contract employees, you like that a lot. I think it's a good process to, to keep it separate that way. They work for us, but it's under a contract, they work for us. And it's no different than a builder hiring a guy to roof the house, or, or, or you hiring somebody to mow your grass, they're a subcontractor. And that's what they are to us, and I think it's, it's a great way to do it. But having them listed under here on this, on this organizational chart, I think is a good idea.
You like revised three? The revised one with Cross Lake Communications directly up to the council? Or would you rather see them?
I think you're Cross Lake.
Go through the administrator.
Where are you on Cross Lake Communications with that comment?
I, I guess I would defer to Dan on that. He's dealt with cities before that have municipal entities, and do they report, I mean, we've got a general manager, and I think Debbie's the general manager, he's the, Kevin, are you the general manager?
Yeah.
And then Debbie is the office manager.
Local manager.
Local, local manager, okay. So the general manager reports to us, and I don't know that he needs to go through Dan. I mean, that's a, a little bit different than a department head, that's a company owned by the city, versus a department that they all get their paychecks through Schar.
All in favor of the revised organization chart with P and Z added to the line under city administrator, the rest of it being the same?
Revised April 13th.
I'll make that motion.
So the revised.
Revised April 13th. With the addition of the planning and zoning department.
Yep. For clarification, there's a proposed April 13th, too. We're talking about the revised April 13th.
Revised proposed.
Yep. No, proposed is a different one. Okay, so you, so you're, you're talking about.
I like the blue, the blue one.
The blue one, revised.
The one that's on the, on the screen.
On the screen now, revised with?
With P and Z under the.
Under the city administrator.
Right. Okay.
Motion's made. I made it.
I'll second it.
Second by Hecox. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have, the second item is memo from April 9th, from Ted, Strand, our Public Works Director, and John Hanke, our Park Director, regarding surplus equipment. You see, the request is to have the council declare the items as surplus, a 2002 Explorer, a 2006 Crown Victoria, and a 2004 F-250 with a plow. And the recommendation is to declare these as surplus, and to advertise these with the minimum bids as shown.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion, Shrupp, second, Hecox, to accept this proposed, what do we want? Surplus equipment list with minimum bids of a pretty limited number. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the third item, update on capital expenditures and planning. We're working with our financial consultant. Unfortunately, he's been out of the country a little bit, as some of the rest of you, I think, have been over this winter. But we are working with him to come up with a funding plan. We did have a, a real good meeting amongst, with him and staff to talk about our finances, and what our needs are, and what our capital expectations are over the next few years. He is putting together a, a plan and proposal for that. We'll then update, hopefully update the capital plan to match up with the funding, and come back to you so we can decide on what direction that we'd like to take. When the funding and plan are established, we're going to, hopefully, the council would give the engineer direction for the 2016 project. We talked about this when we met, and I know there's, has been some interest in moving this along quite quickly, but for the 2015 project, you really need to get going towards the end of the year to get things in place, so you can get it, get things bidding out in, in February, probably March is the latest, Mark can give you a better idea of that. But, so you've got a lot of lead time. So we're really on a good track right now. It's April, we hope to get back to you in May with a proposal. I'd like to get the financial consultant up here, so he can give you all the information that, that you may have, need a, a month to digest it, get something hopefully approved, maybe in June or July. Get the projects going, so that we can get those bid out in early 2016, provided that we have the funding in place for that. So we'd like to get back to you at the next meeting with more specifics, along, hopefully with the consultant, and get these projects moving forward. You also have some funds that, that are in your 2015 budget. You might recall, there was some excess money over and above the equipment certificates that we've done. So we can talk, at that same time, we'd like to talk to you about the possibility of maybe using the 2015 funding for a project or projects that might be in the pipeline now, that are, that are ready to, to get going. Or you could just hold that money over to 2016 as well. So you've got some options. We do have some projects that we could get moving fairly quickly, so you might be able to use the 2015 money that's available for that. So we are working on the updating, or the capital expenditures and the planning, and hopefully, we'll have the, a report and proposal along with the consultant back to you at your next meeting. And then finally, I just wanted to touch on, did receive some information from League of Minnesota Cities today, or perhaps it was Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, that the other community that I work for belongs to. But there's a, a number of proposals before the legislature on transportation funding, and most of those funding proposals have a, a element to them that includes funding for cities of less than 5,000 people. As you probably know, Minnesota state aid is provided to cities over 5,000, and they receive quite a bit of money from the state, I think it's gas and user tax, whatever it is. Mark, you can help me with that. But anyway, House File Four, that is before the legislature, and from transportation funding standpoint, and this is only the House transportation funding proposal, and remember, we've got, we've got five weeks of the legislative session. But if the House proposal would go through, the amount of money to the city of Cross Lake would be $123,938. And that's a nice chunk of money to be used for transportation funding. So that's just the House proposal, I don't want us to get all excited that that might be the number, but that's the kind of number, at least, that the House has made a proposal on. The governor has funding, and the senate also has funding for smaller cities, cities less than 5,000 people. So, you know, we're hopeful that there be, will be some money there. That goes hand in hand with the, the capital planning and transportation planning and funding that we have talked, that I just mentioned earlier. So it is, it's out there, it's a, it's a possibility, and I think this year, it's a strong possibility, because there's so many finance, or transportation funding packages before the legislature.
What do we do? Buy our own bus and run it? That's a wild question, because the current service is a minibus, or out of Brainerd that comes up here, what, once a, once a day? Or twice a day? Once in the morning, once in the afternoon? And the timing is difficult. Talk to that.
You know, I'm not sure about transit funding. The things that, that I usually see with transit funding is there's an awful lot of transit in the Twin Cities, so Greater Minnesota has to claw pretty hard for the, the funding that they get. I couldn't, I can do a little more work on that, and take a look at transit funding, and see what the proposals might be, and how it might affect us here.
Well, to me, I think it would be great if we had a bus that would pick us up around eight in the morning, and a bus that makes the, the circuit around noon, and a bus that makes the circuit around four or five in the, in the evening. I mean, you know, if you want to go to Brainerd and do something, that would kind of, you know, you get one or two half-days with that kind of service.
I'll check with the Dalaride Administrator in Brainerd and see what we can do.
Because they come in here at 7:30 in the morning, roughly, but they leave Brainerd at 2:30 in the afternoon. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
This funding you were talking about is for roads, right?
Yep.
Yeah. We'd be able to use this road, this money this year?
Yeah, this would be road, this would be road funding, but there's always, the trans, the transportation funding packages always have a, a transit element as well. And, but I'll, you, you raise a good question, that, you know, Dalaride, the Crowing, Brainerd Crowing County Dalaride system.
See, if we were shrewd with that money, we could take on some of these minimum maintenance roads.
Another 45-minute conversation.
Yeah, well, let's stay away from that one, though.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
Commission reports, planning and zoning.
We've got three items to be considered tonight on the agenda. The first item is a preliminary and final plat of a, of a plat that was approved by the Planning Commission on March 27th. Excuse me, that would've been, at the March 27th meeting, 2015, for a, for a simple four-lot plat, 10-acre in size. I'll give you a map. If you look on your desktops, you'll see a little packet, to kind of give you some information. This is the location of where the plat's located, and it's south of, it's south of Harbor there. And what you, what they're doing is creating, of Harbor Lane, and they're creating four lots. And you got, you have the, from the plat in front of you, but this is the, this is what the request, the request is, and basically creating, just taking a 40 and creating four 10-acre tracks in this. This has been reviewed by the Parks and, Parks and Trail, and they did recommend the cash in lieu of land, so we, we, the city is in receipt of $1,500 for each of the three created lots as part of this, for a total of $4,500. We do have that in hand. It's been reviewed by Public Works, and I talked with Ted, and he said there's no issue on this with access for these lots, to be able to get access points out to Harbor Lane. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about this, otherwise, I would recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat.
If I might ask a question, Mr. Pence?
Yes.
The, the zoning on here, you got water front for the, the pink area on the, I'm sorry.
Correct, here, yep.
Yeah, that, and a couple of those lots, it's roughly half and half repairing, not repairing rolls of 1,000 feet, I'm assuming is what that line represents?
Correct. So the area that you would see there, it's kind of hard to see on the map here, but the area that's in pink would be within the Shaun area, and the area that's in blue would be the rural residential five, so that would be a five-acre minimum. So they definitely meet the requirements of the zoning district for lot size.
Any differences as far as what you can build and use, do on those lots with?
These are simply residential lots.
Residential lots, okay.
Yep, residential lots.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now, the next item I have is a, is the commercial ordinance that was referred to earlier this evening. You all have a copy of the ordinance itself, and I'll go through just a little bit of the history of how we got to where we're at tonight, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions. Just to point out that we do have Dave Nevin from the, from the Planning Commission here tonight, and Aaron Herzog, who's the chair, Dave is the vice chair, but Aaron tried to be here tonight, but he had to be down in the Twin Cities for a prior engagement. And so just to, as you, have the memo in front of you, kind of summarizes when we started the process. It began back in, in October, and we had an online survey, and then we did some public, we had a public meeting at the Community Center. We had 20 people attend that. We had 11 people complete the survey online. We met with the EDA at Cross Lake Communications. We've worked through Brad through the process. We held a joint Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting with the council in November. And then the, in December, we had the council approve the draft ordinance and put it out for public comment, and we ran that public comment period until, until the end of January. During that time, we had, we met with the chamber, had a couple of open houses to discuss with folks who wanted to come in and talk about the ordinance itself. During the month of February, we took that time to respond to the comments that were submitted, as part of your packet this evening. We held a public hearing on March 27th, and based on that public hearing, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to the council to approve the ordinance as submitted, with some changes in Section 26-763 and 766, and that would be regarding outdoor seasonal sales, regarding transient merchants. So the, if you look at 26-766 in your, in the packet that you have, it would be page 27, and you'll see an area in blue there. It's under, 26-766 would be number two, transient merchant sales. The Planning Commission voted to eliminate that language from the ordinance, because there is current language in city code under 34, Schar, that deals with transient merchants, and there's a process for transient merchants to come to City Hall and get a license, and so they felt that was a duplicate. to come to City Hall and get a license. And so, they felt that was a duplication to make people go through two processes to get a transient merchant. And then, they also made a change, when you would go back to Article 33 under signs, under 26-863 of the administration. They did decide to limit the number of off-premise directional signs for public and nonprofit organizations to no more than two, with a maximum square footage of sign to be no more than two square feet. And so, that would allow some of our nonprofits and public organizations that are not on the main thoroughfare within the city to have a sign that would help point people in that direction. I think the big issue that came up was for the Catholic Church to be able to get some direction on how to get to the church without having some signage off of the main thoroughfare. So, those are the two changes that the Planning Commission recommended to the council, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. If we do go, if the ordinance is approved this evening, it will become officially effective April 21st. It'll be the date that it's published, and there will be a summary of that published on, in the paper. And then, the ordinance is always available at City Hall upon review, but it would be effective April 21st. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Chris, what happened to transient merchant permits and sales?
Trans, the transient merchant piece, the Planning Commission recommended deleting that section, because there already is a section in city code under Chapter 34 that deals with coming to City Hall and getting a transient merchant license through Shar and it, through the city clerk, and then has review from the police department. And so, the Planning Commission felt as though that was being a duplication of permits, requiring somebody to go through two separate processes to be, to obtain a transient merchant license within the city.
I just have one comment, and I did talk to Chris about this, and I just want to make sure everybody understands. There's been significant emphasis on the word "commercial" here. Hopefully, I'm saying this so everybody can understand. But, so you have this "commercial" word embedded in your head. But, throughout this whole document, there's many, many references to residential stuff, just so people understand that. I don't know where to go with that, you know, if, it's just not all "commercial" is what I'm saying. There are some things that pertain to residential scattered through the whole document, so.
And that was the big problem, I think, with the ordinance, is that for some reason, the old ordinance had commercial and residential smashed together in the same spot, which made it very confusing. So, to really make any changes to the commercial piece, you had no choice but to deal with the residential piece.
So, it's still there, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. And so, we had, so those had to be fleshed out and kind of separated out so that we could clarify what was, what the expectations were. You know, and a lot of that came down to some standards for lighting and architectural standards, what type of building materials would we allow, that the city would want to allow. And the old ordinance kind of meshed the two together, and it made it really unclear as to what type of standards applied to commercial property, and what applied to residential property, or what applied to lighting standards for commercial versus residential. So, they, those, they were there in, as part of the, you know, frankly, in the commercial ordinance, and there were residential standards that were in there. So, we clarified that so that it's easier for people to understand what the requirements are.
So, I don't know if that means that, that because it was touted as commercial, that there was a lack of interest by such people as builders or residents. I don't know that. But, I think it should be made clear, if it's possible, that, you know, whenever we title this thing, that it isn't just leading people to believe it's strictly commercial, if that can be done.
Well, at this, at this point, if it gets approved tonight, it'll be put into the ordinance under the appropriate articles as it's there. So, there would, at that point, there'd be no differentiation whatsoever.
I'm still looking for the transient merchant.
Sure.
It's in a different portion of the city code. It's not in this, it's not in this section. It's in a whole different portion of the city code.
This is, this is Chapter 26. The part that we're referring to that's already in city code is in Chapter 34.
It's in Chapter 34.
What's Chapter 34 titled?
Transient Merchants, Peddlers and Solisters.
It's on its own chapter?
Yes.
Always did?
Always has, yeah.
So, this was?
Duplication, unnecessary.
Confusion, I would call it.
I think we added more, it was probably more added here than what was needed, so.
Okay.
Is this blue pretty much all what the Chapter 34 says? Or, is it different here than what was there? Or largely, or substantially the same as what it says in 34?
This is substantially similar to what the type of things that you would have to do. There weren't the specifics about, in 34, about sales area no larger than 1,000 square feet, or those sorts of things. There's not that specific. And, you know, the conversation that we've had is dealing with, talking with Shar and with, you know, the police, that we may have to go back and look at 34, and you might want to amend that a little bit to have some more specifics in there, because right now, it's fairly generic, and there's some discretion in that. So, hasn't been a problem. Hasn't been a real concern either. So, but I think that was our decision, that if we wanted to make some changes to what you want to see transients do, it's better to be associated with Chapter 34 than 26.
That was, that was a challenge with the old ordinance, is that, oh, check over here, and then when you're done there, and then check over there, and then we're done there, check over there. And this section and that section didn't jive, different rules in both sections. It made it extremely confusing for the public.
This is good progress toward that. And if I'm to hear you correctly, Chris, and you've said it time and time again, is it is a work in progress, and we make a step, and then we take a look at it, and then we can move again. We aren't going to get it in one.
Absolutely. This doesn't have to be a one-time stop.
Right. That's not possible.
Absolutely.
I move that we accept as written.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion?
I do.
Go.
I'm glad you did that. But, and that was my pet project. Item, page 35, prohibited signs, number 3K. That particular ordinance has been in the books for quite a long time, and not very universally enforced. And we've discussed this on numerous occasions, who enforces it, and this doesn't say that. So, I don't know what, if, is it referenced in here the penalty, and who does it, and that sort of thing?
Sure.
It's, I made the example before, if in Baxter, McDonald's is allowed to put a sign on every street corner if they wanted to, but Hardee's and Wendy's weren't. Obviously, McDonald's would be excited, but Hardee's and Wendy's would be a little PO'd. So, and that's been the case here, because, you know, we don't, we don't really have people that are paid to go out and grab those signs. We certainly don't want residents do it, doing it. That's vandalism. So, here we go.
Enforcement of the ordinance is through the Crosslake City Attorney, Crosslake City Police Department, and the administration shall have a duty to enforce this, this chapter. Any violation of this ordinance is a misdemeanor.
That's stiffer than it was before, isn't it, Chris?
Yeah, there's more people involved in the enforcement of the administration, absolutely.
So, what that's saying is that if there's an illegally placed real estate directional sign somewhere in town, the police department's supposed to pull it out? Is that what they're saying?
What it says is that they, they, that there are, the entities that enforce the ordinance are the Planning and Zoning Department.
Okay.
The attorney, and also then, the police department are listed in here as being enforcement of the ordinance.
Now, question, along with that, you just inserted planning and zoning in the enforcement. And I remember in the near past, you said, "And the council is not involved in enforcement." You wrote a note about it one day. But, if that's the case...
It's your job to see.
I got the message the other day that planning and zoning is not involved in sign enforcement.
It is, and that's not a, that's not an accurate statement.
I know, it's probably not, but that's.
I think we need to go back. One thing, if it's, you know, the council's job is to set policy and set ordinance, and then you decide who gets to enforce that ordinance. And the decision, and the ordinance says it's enforced by the administrator, which is a position that I hold, and the staff that work under my position, the city attorney, and then the police department. As far as enforcing the sign ordinance, that we're not going to enforce a sign ordinance, absolutely enforce a sign ordinance. There's no question about it. But, the question comes up is, is the process and procedure for how the council wants us to enforce that sign ordinance. That's what it boils down to. That's the question.
I think incurring a bill every time there's a $50 sign out of place from the attorney is not what I would like to see happening. And I don't know what's wrong with, when there's a flagrant violation of sign placement, why you guys don't pluck, I call it plucking them, why you guys don't pluck them. And it was our policy in the past that the planning and zoning did that, and they took them over to the joint maintenance facility, and people could go retrieve their signs.
I'm not comfortable, in essence, stealing, taking stuff like that. I don't think that's
I can appreciate.
proper. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the correct thing to do. I think there, you know, there's, there is, there is due process, and people can be notified of violations. Now, if that's the route that you want to go and have, you know, have, you know, things being taken, then typically, these signs would be in right-ofways. They're typically on the right-ofway of your city streets, or your county road. Ends up being more of a road authority issue of having signs placed in the right-ofway. And, you know, and so I had that, you know, discussion with Chief Hartman today, just about that type of scenario and how that works. And so, having, you know, he had mentioned having signs placed on private property, you'd have a much, not able to go take things off private property. When things are in the right-ofway, that's, if it's a city right-ofway, that's your right-ofway. It's your decision as to what you want to do in that right-ofway. So...
Well, if I can, we talked about this a little bit this afternoon, and, I mean, if the council wants us to get aggressive and get all these signs out of the right-ofway, we want you to give us some direction to do that. I know, Mark, you want us to do that. Obviously, you don't give us direction as a single person. So, we would like, and we've talked about this before, and maybe you think we, you know, Mark probably thinks, "Well, God, I already did this a couple of times. Why aren't all the signs gone?" But, we'd like you to give us that direction as a council, because if we get 100 signs down at the joint maintenance facility from realtors all over the area, you're going to hear about it.
Sure.
There's no doubt about it. And we want you to have made a conscious decision, this is what you want us to do. And then, we have to talk a little bit about who's going to do that. You know, I don't think the PD filling up their trunks, you know, with Realtor signs, you know, I don't know if that's the thing to do either. But, yeah, I mean, we got people around town. I mean, Ted's group and whoever else, maybe it can be a concerted effort. But, what I'd like to see probably beforehand is find out who all these signs belong to. Get them a letter, tell them you've got five days, 10 days, seven days, I don't care. Give us, give us some time. You got to get these out of the, out of the right-ofway, because after this date, whatever that is, if it's May 1st, we're going in and we're plucking them all out of there, and we're going to put, take them down to the joint maintenance facility. I'm all for aggressive enforcement, provided that you support everything that we're doing. But, we think we should give a little notification beforehand, because we think that, God, we've been able to do this for 30 years up here. Why, I mean, what happened? Or, five years, or one year, I don't care. What happened? What made the difference? I don't know. Maybe I'm talking out of turn, but I just, I think we should give some notice to the realtors, and after that notice, I mean, clean up the right-ofway.
If I might, before Ted weighs in, a little history on this. Part of this came from, first off, it looked horrid. The road going down to the Community Center would have 20 of them pointing up, pointing down, tipped over, rusty, looked horrid. Secondly, it became a public safety issue. With that many signs on a busy intersection, people couldn't see around them. I don't know, if you're in an SUV, you're sitting up a little higher. But, if you're in a car, you couldn't see around them. And so, it becomes a public safety, if you, especially if they're way out toward the road, if they're attached to a sign, that's illegal, a speed limit sign or a stop sign, those kinds that are wire-tied to a sign like that, that's right out by the intersection, it's illegal to do that. I'd like to see very aggressive enforcement of that. And frankly, that particular part about being in the right-ofway and being tied to a sign, that's illegal anywhere in the state. I'm sorry, if a real estate agent doesn't know that, tough toodles, you just lost a $30 sign. That's how I'd feel about it. Go ahead and yank the thing out and take it down to Ted's or throw it in the garbage. I don't really care.
You know, and I will side with Mark, because both of us were involved with some of the signage ordinance that went through. And it looked like everything in the town was for sale, or being built, or being sold, or, I mean, I think there were no less than 25 signs on the corner of Anchor Point Road and 66. There were also a ton of them down at Manhattan Beach Corner. I mean, it just went crazy. And you had building suppliers, subcontractors, everybody. And, you know, I don't, 100 signs, I'll bet they plucked 1,000 signs. Well, we finally got the point made, and maybe now, we can be more realistic about it, be a little more gentle, but be as forceful as we have to be, because if you're too gentle, they'll just grow like trees, or like
Keep coming.
Grass again.
Well, and that's the, the local realtors have mostly complied.
Yes, they have.
Mostly. They've been very good about it. It's the out-of-town realtors come in. And again, if they're putting them on an intersection in a right-ofway or something like that, and they just don't know there's a sign ordinance, okay, maybe. But, if it's right out by the road and it's wire-tied to a stop sign, that's illegal anywhere in the state of Minnesota.
I know.
I don't give them any sympathy for that one.
But, I, there's a motion on the table to pass this, and I would think that that would be a good thing to call the vote for. But, I wish that we would figure out how we enforce this. Mr. Ted Strand?
I'm all for what you're talking about. But, you're just touching on a part of it. It's not just the signs that are in the right-ofway. It's other personal property. From the sign that says, "Mr. Nelson lives here," or "Mr. Lives Here," to the rock that's got the name in the front, it's in the right-ofway. You're just touching on part of it. Now, if you're going to go for it, are you going to go for all of it, or are you just going to touch on sign? That's the question I got for you. Because I have, I have hazards on the road, and the rocks is tall in the right-ofway.
I've seen them.
And they're two foot from the edge of the road.
Well, you got to roll away the rock. We're not here that before. But, anyway, you know, I know where there's some of those are, and I've seen rocks that you guys, when the summer residents have left, you roll the rocks out of the way so you can plow snow. I understand that, Ted, and I think you're, we got to stay out of the right-ofway. We just do, first and foremost.
And you guys got to be ready for the phone calls. Because, we did this before. My phone rang every day, all day long. Why did you take my sign? Where did you put it? I still, to this day, have probably 25 of them down at the shop. We've thrown some away, but now the county has been cleaning up their right-ofways. So, we got another 25 of them down there, 30 of them again.
You know, the other problem we've got is the old tradition in Crosslake, of every intersection's got a canoe paddle, or an image of a boat, or a tree-like symbol that says Jones this way. And, you know, before we had the 9/11 addresses, and the addressing scheme that was spawned by 9/11, that was the only way you found your way around here. But, that has changed. But, I can tell you, there's still people, my neighbors, who've been here a long time, still insist upon tacking an arrow to a tree.
Mr. Pence, are you saying that the enforcement part of it should be somewhere other than here?
What I'm saying is that the enforcement section we've got is in, up in, is up in, Article 3 of the ordinance talks about the enforcement, and where it's a misdemeanor to violate the ordinance. So, we can head down that process, and, you know, tonight's the night that if you want to, you know, I don't think, frankly, you don't have to have an ordinance to take signs out of the right-ofway. It's your right-ofway. It belongs to the city. Frankly, I'll tell you the truth. This ordinance does not apply to right-ofways. This ordinance applies to private property. A right-ofway is not private property. Dedicated private, right-ofway is not private property. This ordinance really applies to private property, not to right-ofways.
Well, but that's...
So, you all have been talking about this for a little while. Let's just use Anchor Point Road, for example. Okay, if I put my house up for sale, I can put a sign at the end of my driveway.
Correct.
Okay, the only sign that's necessary.
Correct.
You don't need to go put another sign down at the end of the road by Crosslake Tavern, or, right? I mean, that's where, that's what I see as the junk. We don't, we're, you know, we're, we're, the internet these days, you know, we, we don't need a sign to tell us that there's a house for sale down here. You know, that's, that's old school, that's redundant, that's no longer necessary. But, I mean, if you're going down the road, I would probably want a sign at the end of my own road that says that, you know, the Nelson Residence is for sale.
Road or driveway?
Well, I mean, right-ofway. I mean, when Ted mentioned like the rock thing and whatever, okay, I get that some people go out to the end of their driveway, and they put a big fancy rock with an engraving on it with their name, or the address, or whatever, and maybe it's, it's too close, closer to the road than it should be. It's technically in the right-ofway. I mean, that's kind of a different subject to me. I'm just saying, when you guys are talking about cleaning up signs here, and you've had these conversations previously, I'm just saying that the junk that I see is, why does everybody litter the corner? We don't need 19 real estate signs at the end of Anchor Point Road, pointing down Anchor Point, saying there's 19... Anchor Point saying there's nineteen houses for sale down here.
Right.
Okay, we don't, we don't need to figure that out.
In my opinion, personally.
But I mean, if my, if my house were for sale, if it were my home, and I listed with you, I would expect that it, somewhere towards the end of my driveway, nicely placed or whatever, could be a sign that says, "Okay, this is the place that's for sale." But we don't need, we don't need another one at the end of, you know, out on the highway to tell you to go down Anchor Point, but once you're going down there.
These are for.
Right. That's what, yeah, that's exactly what those are for. I mean, that's, that's silly to, you know, I mean, you don't need to put a sign out there to say to go down here to look for a house for sale. Is that what we're talking? I mean, that, and I'm just giving my view, that that's what I see as kind of being the junk in the community is.
Yeah, the.
You know, you pull up to, to the corner of Moonlight Square and, you know, that whole thing right in front of you as you're waiting to turn right or left is, is a, you know, is junk.
You're asking, are the exceptions F, it's allowed to have a for-sale sign?
Right. So, I mean, I, I got what Ted was saying about, you know, he's got rocks and, I mean, you're not just talking about signs, you're talking about, but, so I was just a little confused. Are we, you know?
Well, the process right now is when there is an illegal sign, say if there's a real estate sign at a, at a junction, John goes and gets that phone number, calls the Realtor and tells him they got to get out of there. And we haven't had any issues yet with somebody not getting rid of the sign. There's, there's, we've had a few people kind of not be real happy about the idea, but they have removed those signs. So I, I'm not sure if you're seeing a proliferation of them now, but I can tell you that John, John is on top of that. When he comes up and sees them at the intersection, if there is a sign there that's not meeting the standards of the arrow and the, and the, you know, the label of the, you know, the real estate organization that put it, you know, that sort of thing. And so he is making the phone calls, working with people and getting those signs down. So, you know, that I can, that I can assure you that that's the process that's going through now, and I don't, I don't know if there's been, like I said, a, a large proliferation of more signs have come up recently or not, but we do, we do enforce that part of the ordinance, just like we would anything else.
Mr. Mayor? But, Mark, do you, do you use these directional signs yourself?
I did this week to make a point, okay?
Yeah, okay.
You saw a bunch of mine pop up in the last week. This, and I was hoping some other realtors would join me in this little civil disobedience and say, "Do you want it to look like this again? This is, we want this in here." I just assume not even have the black and white ones. Again, the buyers show up with these, they can give me directions to the house. Sellers would just assume there's a directional arrow at every intersection from here to St. Paul. Okay? So, so that's the difference we have from the different mindsets of the two. But, and obviously, snowplow drivers aim for them, so do ATV drivers, and durag sailors love to steal them and repaint them, thief this way. So, so the, they're, to me, they're a maintenance nightmare. I hate them anyway, and they do junk up the town. But it's the ones that are in the right-ofway, if we can make sure that between Public Works, between the police, between P and Z, that the ones that are in the right-ofway are removed, that's, that's to me what. And if you want to remove it and tell them where they can go, "It's over Ted's, go down there and pick it up if you want." But I would take it out bef, just, it's there, if you're driving by it. I don't mean you need to go out and look for them, but if you're going by slow one day and you see one of those signs, they are, they're a hazard. Somebody's vision could be blocked. I ride motorcycle, I like to be visible. And so if that sign obscures someone's vision of me coming down the highway, I'd like it removed. It's not supposed to be there. It's been that way in this town for a long, long time. It's been that way in the state forever. Ignorance of the law in this case is no excuse. Take it down.
But you can find, if you didn't have that sign, you can find the house in 2015 that's for sale.
Yes, yeah, with the mapping programs.
So why do we even want to allow any of them?
Well, this, this was agreed to by a committee ten years ago. I, I'm not saying I necessarily agreed with it, but it was better than what we had.
Right.
And so I, I went along with.
But times have changed and, you know, it's kind of like a.
That time hasn't changed. I will agree with Mark. We do not need fifty signs on every street corner here in town, and we got to that point. It was awful. The buildings, and it wasn't just the real estate trade. Let's, let's defend them a little bit. It was every material supplier, we had subcontractors, contractors, realtors, road builders, I mean, I, God, it was just unbelievable. And so if you go down Eagle, or Anchor Point Road, and if you got six, seven signs per project and you got five projects on the road, you got thirty-five signs. And that's the way it worked. It was awful. And the building supply guys use it as an excuse to teach their drivers where the project was. That was the excuse for them. So, anyway, hey, we got a motion on the table in a second. I would like to ask that we continue, ask Chris to continue to work on smoothing out enforcement, because I'm not sure, based on this conversation, that we have resolved all the enforcement issues that go with this. I can see that. And you, you're going to have to lead that one, because we're going to need help, if you would be so kind.
Okay.
And if I can add that to your motion, whose motion was that, to approve this?
It was Gary. I, Brad seconded. But maybe we should vote on this and then make a separate motion on the enforcement issue. Just giving them authority from the council to remove the signs.
I'm asking to make it part of the same motion, so that the approval has got its own caveat. I did that on purpose.
Okay. You'd rather have it included? So you'd have to ask these two, Phil? Yeah.
So, Shar, can you handle that one?
If they amend their motion, yeah.
I can do that.
Did you do it?
I did.
All in favor of approval of the Cross Lake Land Use Ordinance Amendment, the three-twenty-seven-fifteen version? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Well, thanks a lot. That was an interesting process.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
And like I said, that'll be up and effective on April twenty-first, so.
How long have you worked on this one?
We began that back in August of 2014.
You did a great job. Thank you.
Entire P and Z staff did a great job. I see Dave's here, but all those guys did, put in a lot of work on this, and thank you very much for your guidance on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Just real quick, we'll give you the monthly permit numbers for March. We ended up with one new construction, new dwelling for the, in March. It was a total of three for the season. Get down to the, the things are starting to pick up a little bit at the counter. We had a total between the counter, phone, email, we had two-hundred-and-forty-seven interactions with staff. That's a total of five-hundred-and-thirty-seven for the year, so almost half of the interactions we've had so far have just been in March alone. So things are starting to pick up with the, with the spring season upon us. We have, we have three complaints right now that we're working on, and we haven't resolved those yet, but we, there are active and open cases. And as far as the public hearings, we've gone through, and there have been, one condition is permits been issued so far this year, one subdivision, and two lot line consolidation adjustments done at administrative level. So unless there are any questions for me, that's all I have for this evening.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Chris. Cross Lake Communications, Kevin Larson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Shar has included in your packet this evening the highlights for Cross Lake Communications for the month of March. Included in those, in your packet is the minutes from the March nineteenth joint meeting of Cross Lake Communications Advisory Board and the City Council. We reviewed the audit at that time. Second, you've already taken a look at the customer counts, have been included in your packet, and you reviewed those. Also, I'd like to report in my highlights, number new, we created new packages for our TV product, and we've increased speeds for internet, and that has been received very well by the customers of Cross Lake Communications, the members of the city. And we really think that that's been a positive for them. It's given them choices, which people, we all know that people like to have choices. And we've had very good response on that over the past month. Fourth, our technicians continue to work on County Road Thirty-Six, and basically we are ready for them. We understand, of course Ted would know more, but we understand that they're going to start removing the, the old asphalt on April twentieth, and we are ready for that and work, work hand in hand with Public Works and the road construction there. Number five, the advisory board recommends to the city council approve of the two-fif-, two thousand fifteen operations and capital budgets. We, the advisory board went thoroughly through that at, on the March nineteenth meeting, and we recommend this budget to you folks, and I've met with a number of you prior to this meeting to see if there's any other additional questions I could answer, answer at that point in time. So this evening, I recommend to you, following the advisory board's recommendation, to approve that budget that's within your packet.
Apparently looks to me like we need a, a motion for that, right?
Also move.
I'll second.
Motion, Wesel, second, Hecox. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And finally, I'd like to report, and most people are, I think are aware of this, but we will be holding a joint advisory board and council strategic planning meeting on April twenty-eighth at Whitefish Lodge and Suites. And Shar, I believe you're also posting that also for us. So we're looking forward to, from eight AM to approximately one PM. And I've got some, I've got a national speaker that's going to be speaking to us, I've got engineers, and I've got some internet specialists. And so we'll take a look. I'm hoping to have, no, that's incorrect. I will be having some numbers and some ideas about some long-range planning for us to take a look at, at that point in time.
That's at Whitefish Lodge and Suites?
Yes. John wouldn't let me have a room at the community center.
He can be that way.
No. But if there's any other questions, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Public Works Cemetery. Somebody want to put up the cleaning notice? Have you got a copy of that, Brad, please? We're making an announcement that the city of Cross Lake will be cleaning the Pinewood Cemetery on the week of May eighteenth. Personal items, items of decor and so forth that you may have at the cemetery should be removed no later than May seventeenth. Items that are worn, torn, faded, that are not removed will be disposed of. Any questions? Ted loves telephone calls, give them a shout. Is that all right, Ted?
Thank you.
All right. Park and Rec. John, you still here?
I'll be brief, promise here. Just a couple of things to update you on. Revenues for the weight room continuing to be good. We're up another two thousand above last March's revenues there, so that's two months in a row that we've been two thousand-plus dollars ahead of last year's pace. So that's great. Donna has started her yoga class again, for those that have been taking advantage of Silver Sneaker classes in the past. We didn't run that over the winter, but she has begun those again, so let our seniors know that that's going on. AAA senior driving class coming up May fourteenth from nine to one. You can contact the community center for more information. And we're doing a burn of the rain garden here coming up Tuesday, April twenty-first, if the conditions permit, and that's, was a grant that we worked with, with Crow Wing County Soil and Water, along with the Minnesota Conservation Corps. And then also our chip in our local fire department here, they were part of the grant, the in-kind part of the grant. We needed a, a three-hundred-dollar donation in their service. Having the truck down there and having the guys available counts as that match for that grant. So it's a good, good program for us that should enhance the prairie vegetation that we have there, so it should be a great summer for, that area should really beautify that up nicely. We've got a special seminar coming up May seventh at the community center at one o'clock. Excuse me.